Meeting called to order. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on February 2nd, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved and circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? No objections noted. Motion carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None noted. Oops, sorry, councillor Ivanov. Your speakers off.
In the close 4.1, I have a conflict.
Okay.
Through you, your worship to council, just wanted to make note again. Since we've changed back to having a full separate agenda for closed, at the open moment, you can only, you just have to declare for the open items and then enclosed, we can declare it then.
Okay.
Okay. Petition and delegations, none noted. Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the special meeting of council held December 22nd, 2020, minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 12th, 2021, minutes of the special meeting of council held January 19th, 2021, minutes of the special media of council held January 21st, 2021, and that council accept the minutes of the following committee meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Library Board Meeting held October 22nd, 2020, minutes of the Museum Advisory Committee Meeting held November 18th, 2020.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Verbal reports will start with Ms. Sackrider on COVID-19 update.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. Good afternoon. We are currently in week three of the provincial shutdown, which will remain in effect until at least February the 9th. The province has been evaluating the results of the measures put in place and will determine when it is safe to lift the restrictions or if they need to be extended. Once our district knows whether the shutdown will be lifted, and if so, what color of the framework we will be placed in, each facility will respond with opening as it is permitted based on the legislation. For now, all facilities remain closed to the public. However, the essential services of long-term care, fire services, waste management, and roads maintenance continue to operate following all sector-specific public health and workplace safety measures. Municipal departments that are required to close to regular traffic are operating with whatever level of service they are able to. The Texentennial Library offers curbside pickup of books by calling or emailing your order in. Cross-country skis and snowshoes can be booked and used seven days a week on the trails behind the Joe Mavernat Community Complex. Ten skaters at a time are able to use the outdoor rink at Civic Park. Pre-reservation is required by calling the complex during business hours. No games where people may come within two meters of each other can be played. Therefore, unless people live within the same house, sticks are not allowed on the ice. Other than the fact that everyone wants to play hockey, residents are very respectful of the rules and are extremely pleased that there are opportunities to recreate. I will now turn it over to the Executive Director of Tech Pioneer Residence, Ms. Schumacher, for an update.
Thank you, Ms. Sackrider. Your worship through you to council. This is the verbal update for COVID-19 information from Tech Pioneer. The homeless outbreak was officially declared over on January 21st by the Tennessee Health Unit. The home continues to diligently follow all of the regulations and directives from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, as well as the Public Health Unit during this provincial lockdown. This includes increased cleaning, increased staffing, mandatory use of personal protective equipment, et cetera. The home remains closed to general visitors, and as per the directives, only those essential caregivers are permitted to enter. These requests are being reviewed on a case-by-case basis. All staff and essential caregivers continue to have weekly surveillance swabbing done, and we are very pleased to announce that 96% of our residents received their first dose of the Moderna vaccine this past Saturday. The next dose will occur in approximately 28 days, and we're pleased to also announce that all of the residents are doing well and there were no adverse reactions. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. No other further reporting? Megan?
I believe that concludes the verbal update, your worship.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept, receive those reports?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the verbal COVID-19 update be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.2 Asset Management Plan 2021 Requirements. Treasurer Keith Gorman, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. As you're aware, we're legislated to complete an asset management plan for all of our core assets by July 1st, 2021. Our core assets consist of roads, water, sewer, and similar. In recognizing the timing constraints, the limited exposure to these requirements that our team members have had, and then our other competing priorities, we're looking to seek approval on having a consultant prepare this plan. We believe by utilizing a consultant, that'll help reduce the risk and challenges we're anticipating. We also feel that this will be a good opportunity to gain knowledge from an external group, which will put us in a better position for our next set of requirements in 2023. The consultant that we're proposing is PSD, Public Sector Digest, which is a leader in asset management in municipalities. It's a large firm that focuses on both consulting and software implementation. They've proposed preparing a plan that would be compliant with the legislative requirements, and they've also proposed implementing software that would directly align with our strategic priorities that were identified in our recent service delivery review as well. In reviewing the software, we did speak with Tammy of WSCS Consulting, and this was one of the few applications that she felt really fit the profile for the town based on our needs and our existing systems. The software can integrate with two of our core systems that we're currently utilizing, VADAM and CGIS. But we hope to see some sort of extension around these deadlines, and we recognize that there's lobbying and ongoing support that's being put forward. We don't want to put, you know, all of our eggs in that basket. We think that regardless of timing of deadlines, even if we're fortunate enough to actually receive an extension, that we'd still benefit from the knowledge transfer from this consultant and the systems and processes that they would be recommending. I'll open it up to the floor if there's any questions.
Councillor Adams.
Yeah, so for sole source, I know we went with like the leader of like the best one out there. Was there just no other opportunity to reach out to anybody else before we decided to go sole source, or how was that decided? Sorry.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Michelle and I had actually taken in a software demonstration last year with PSD as well. We had traveled up to Capus Gasing, so we'd been working and talking with them on and off for the better part of almost a year at this point. When we talked to them and we identified the software implications that they have and the fact that it fit the profile, it seemed like it would be the best opportunity for us on that path forward. The alternative is there are, you know, other vendors that can go in source and build an asset management plan, and there's no real legislative requirements to say what format it has to be in or anything like that, but it's the synergies that we would get around this type of thing.
Councillor Owen.
Yeah, I get really nervous with sole source, but having said that and reading the information that was given to us, there was a lot of things there that I thought really fit us well, that our current systems we're using would be, would fit with this. Sorry, I don't know the technical language, but also that it'll be an integrated program. All the departments will be on the same program. There was a lot to like about this proposal. I'm just wondering if if we have any idea what other consultants would have charged us. That's that's my only concern, because what I read, yeah, it makes, it makes 100% perfect sense and I don't think we could do better, but I'm just wondering if we had any other prices.
At this time, I've only sought the one price?
In your opinion, do you think, like, to me, it didn't seem overpriced, but I mean, I know nothing of that area of business to as treasurer, do you think that that price was in line with the services that they are providing us?
I couldn't honestly sort of assess as to the efforts associated with actually developing an asset management plan. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the one in 2016, and I didn't get a chance to look and see what it had cost to develop through a third party, but it does look like that first kick out it was actually done through, through a consultant.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
I think the one thing, Keith, after reading the report and their presentation, the example that they gave of a particular tone was very concise, a lot of information, and I think looking ahead to the future and the planning, it sure fits the bill as councillor Owen was saying. A little concerned about the price, but if you feel the price is fair for what they want to they promised to deliver, I'm okay with that. They seem to have their act together, that's for sure. It was very concise.
If there is hesitation on the price, we can reach out to do some preliminary quoting from other providers. It'll be a bit more comprehensive, because obviously we would be taking away the software implications of it. That piece, we can develop and try to understand more what the additional applications that would fit the mold were with Tammy. I know she had just indicated that there were only a handful of applications that really fit the profile. Some of her concerns that she referenced were the ability to scale up, which this application did have. It's widely used across a lot of different municipalities. Actually, I was speaking with Ms. Billado last week, and they're using it in calendar, and she said it was a pretty valuable tool, having some exposure to it now and seeing that piece. So it's, I mean, we do, we do have a clock, you know, we do have to get moving on this because of timing. You know, we can probably get some quotes back quick enough, though. I think depending on however everybody else is progressing, we might find some competition in the sector. That would be one of the other challenges is finding a firm that's large enough to actually complete the plan, whereas PSD is about 95 consultants on staff, which gave them that comfort in ensuring we'd be compliant by the July deadline as well.
Well, I will say, Keith, compared to the 2016 plan, it's like night and day. It has a lot more information, I think, can be better used for planning and budgeting purposes, that's for sure. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I'm
My hand up.
Yep, sorry.
Go ahead, Lad.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm somewhat concerned about the sole source, and I will appreciate it if we can get more quotes so that we can compare. Maybe this is the best price, but there's no way anybody will know until you get another price, so I'm totally uncomfortable with sole source. The other question that I have is what is, what is our procurement policy regarding this sort of amount of money? There must be a cutoff whereby we say, well, no, I saw stars would not do for this. I can see staff going out for something 10,000, 12,000, not a big deal, but what is the, I haven't read the procurement policy, maybe something that someone sent to me. But again, this is one of those things that at least we should come here and look at a couple of prices, and then we can say, well, this guy is the best one to choose from. And again, like any tender or bids, we always say the lowest price may not necessarily be the one that will pay. There may be other, maybe other criteria too that will fit in that would say, okay, even though you're lower, but we're going with this guy here because there's other factors. Okay, the, the other thing that I have for Mr. Gorman to clear, clean up for me, clarify for me is that are we dealing with PSD? Are we dealing with WSCS? And this company that we're dealing with, what is their track record? I mean, do you have any example from a municipality like ours, our size of what they've done in terms of asset management?
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, councillor Shaba. In regards to the purchasing, we've actually repealed the bio, the policy, but we do have a bylaw in place. In regards to sole source, it essentially says that over 35,000, we would take it to town council for approval with the director's recommendation if they believe it to be the most cost-effective or beneficial to the town, which is how was brought forward tonight. There are others, though, in the sector that we can easily get some pricing from, I'm sure, and see if the timing works for deliverables. As far as who we would be dealing with, the contractor we're proposing is PSD. They are well-versed in the municipal sector. They have implemented citywide software in a number of municipalities. And WSCS is our last service delivery review consultant that was sort of giving us some guidance on the recommendations that we're looking for and sort of the synergies that we're trying to achieve. So WSCS has indicated that an asset management application would be well-versed in our plans and our future path forward in asset management. And then they have laid out a strategy where you would look at moving from asset management into work order modules and that type of thing, and the benefits to this particular application, it does have that scalability.
One second, Rick. Keith, that brings up a good point. Are there any communities that we are aware of that are using it that we can would they, this company supply as a reference? It wouldn't hurt.
No doubt. I'm sure we can get references. As I said, Ashley just was using it last week, and she had noted the benefits, but we'll ask PSD to provide some formal references that we can follow up with, for sure.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, the last time I remember that council gave a single-source item was the Grader for the Works Department. It certainly was a lot more expensive than this contract. I'm concerned about meeting the government deadlines. What we did with the Grader is we took the director's recommendations and we voted in favor of it, and I hate sole-source things, but taking into consideration that this was recommended by the other consultant that we use who knows, who's familiar with our system, it's recommended by a director of corporate and the fact that it mates or matches, integrates with our current major operating systems, and the fact that we have a deadline to meet, and there's no guarantee that deadline will be extended. I think I don't know if two weeks makes a difference or not, but I don't have a problem in this case, and I stress this case, going with a sole source, which is you have to do a lot to convince me to go sole source, so that's where I stand. If Keith doesn't think waiting two weeks to get to touch base with some of the other communities for recommendations, if that's not going to cause a problem in terms of our ultimate deadline, I don't have a problem with that neither, but Keith would know better than me on that. Thank you.
Could I recommend approval subject to three satisfactory references? I'm sure you can get the references fairly quick by this supplier or company, I should say. What's your thoughts, Keith?
If we're going to be coming back with references at the same time, I can reach out to get preliminary pricing from a couple of other consultants.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna take the two weeks to come back with references. We'll take the extra legwork and get some comfort over the prices and see if there's something that that better aligns. I have been talking a lot with Tammy, and I can touch base with her to see if there's another application in particular to get some quote around as well.
So Keith, can you tell me, why does it take two weeks to get all those things? I mean, turnarounds are very quick these days. If you call, you must know some of this company, some of these firms, I mean, people call my firm, we need something we needed tomorrow. If it's something that we do on a regular basis, we can have a turnaround of less than 24 hours to provide the pricing. So why is it that you have a two-week duration here to get everything moving?
It was more to align with the next meeting of council.
Council, yeah.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I mean, if we think it's warranted to jump into a special meeting, we could maybe get the quotations and
Of course, we always
meeting if we think that'll get us a little bit of extra time.
Yeah, I'm very trained in special meetings now, so we have to do a special. We do a special meeting.
There are a lot of players in the sector. We'll if we're going to go to the effort of getting some reference checks done, we can get the preliminary pricing from
We're spending taxpayers' money, guys. I think it's, well, we owe them our best efforts to say at least, hey, this is why we picked this guy. You know, if I talk to people, we pick this guy because they're good, blah, 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 and the price is right. So here, I have no comparison for that, so we have to be very careful about sole source. We have to really do, I'm sure you guys are doing a good job, due diligence, but again, this is one of those things whereby you know, I'm not in favor of coronation of one firm, because, you know, we have to really be very careful. So if you can get those things, and you know, your worship is that we need faster turnaround to get things moving, and I mean, I leave it up to them to call special meeting, and we'll look at it. At least, everybody will have the facts on the table to make a very final decision.
Keith, any recommendations as to this should go? We've bounced around a few ideas.
I know, like I said, there's enough players in the sector. We can easily obtain some additional pricing specifically around the asset management plan, and then we can explore a couple other options that would fit our profile from a software perspective.
You don't have any problem coming back in two weeks?
No, I mean, at this point, I don't think it's going to change things drastically. It's not like it's gonna, I don't think it'll change drastically by any means.
Confirmation, that's all.
Yeah, we come back to them and ultimately, they'll be working for us and they'll want to meet that deadline, so I'm sure that they can step it up and make that
I don't know, you can blame the, you can, if you missed the deadline, you can blame it on COVID anyway, so they'll be understandable, right? All right, thank you.
Any further comments or concerns? None noted?
Yeah, whoa.
Oh, sorry, Casey.
Just a quick question out of curiosity. What is, is there any mention of what the penalty is if we do miss the deadline because of this?
I haven't actually investigated to see what the penalty would be. I would assume that would play into our funding.
Yeah, but that's what I had heard when this first started getting the whole funding away from us. So like if it's in between $40,000 and no funding from the government, that one's a no-brainer. Like, I don't want to I feel more comfortable telling the taxpayers we have to pay $40,000 for something than having to lose $200,000 in funding over it, so just one way of seeing it.
Okay, Megan, what do you come up with for multiple choice on on a motion?
Sure. So through you, your worship to council, I currently have councillor Ivanov as the mover and councillor Owens as the seconder. So I will put it to councillor Ivanov if he wishes to go forward with the current recommended motion, or are you wanting me to supply the amended motion?
Well, I, you know what, I think we can go with the current motion. I think that if yeah, Keith has done a commendable job, and I think Casey's concerns are are also a concern of mine that if we're too late with this and we stop getting funding, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, save a couple of grand on, on some software and end up losing a bunch of money from provincial funding, I think is kind of silly, so I would go with the current motion.
Okay, so your worship, I would suggest that we put the current motion on the floor to a vote, and if it then is denied, then somebody else can be the mover and seconder for a different motion.
Okay, go ahead, read the motion.
So currently moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2021-Corp-004 entitled Asset Management Plan 2021 Requirements be received, that staff be directed to negotiate and procure the sole source preparation of an asset management plan compliant with OREG 588 slash 17 requirements, that staff be directed to negotiate and procure the sole source implementation of asset management software, that staff be directed to include $42,400 for an asset management plan in the 2021 annual budget as a pre-approved project, and that staff be directed to include $29,017 for asset management software and implementation in the 2021 annual budget as a pre-approved project.
Any further comments? Approved? Are voting, sorry? All in favor? Opposed? Lad, I can't see your hand one where the other was. You're you're mute.
Yeah, sorry, I said I made my point that I'm not in favor of the sole source going forward, so I'm not in favor. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the votes, five to two in favor. Motion carried. Item 6.3, Kirkland Municipal Drinking Water Licensing Renewal Application. Mr. Ribery, Director of Public Works.
To your worship, through you to council, as you are well aware, the Kirkland Lake Municipal Drinking Water License expires April 12th, 2021. It was, we had brought the financial plan last fall, October 6th, to council for approval to proceed, and we did submit the report to the Ministry of Environment and Conservation and Parks, but they've noted that we required an additional year in our financial report, so we've revised the report accordingly to meet the submission requirements. The report had to be from 2021 to 2026, based on the year of expiry. So we've done that, we've we've completed their revision and we're looking for, to adopt this financial plan to council. As you well, you're well aware, there has been a number of a number of legislative initiatives affecting water system management and operation over the past decades. These initiatives were a result of the waterborne illness tragedy in Wachton in 2020. So basically, we did cover the bases. We went from 2020 to 2027 in the financial plan to cover all the requirements, and I'm looking for approval. If there's any question, I will answer that.
One question, Mr. Ribery, and actually, Megan might was involved in this. The other day, I received an email asking about if council members have taken any water treatment courses. There was an overview put on and on legislation, and the responsibility of members of council was put on by Aqua, but I think it's close to three years old. At that time, there was a few of the Public Works employees. I went to it as well. It was held at Demisclane Shores, but I just wanted to clarify, I know I kind of forgotten about it, but is that an actual requirement these days? And because the subject came up, that's why I'm kind of curious.
I believe so, because we are responsible to ensure that we maintain our plant. And we have, you know, we are responsible to maintain the plant and do capital works and maintain the system, so we are all responsible. It just, it makes a better understanding for Uh, it just, it's, it makes a better understanding for council to, to take that, uh, pro, that course is offered. I can always reach out to Aqua uh, to see if they, they would entertain that again, if there's a need.
It was a one night, uh, stand, maybe two or three hours, uh. He didn't have to be a rocket scientist, but it was good. It was a good heads up, uh, and maybe Aqua can facilitate that, uh, counselor Owens first and then counselor White.
About two years ago, December, November two thousand eighteen, we all participated in, in training at Heritage North that explained to us, so it hasn't been three, it's been two years, our response, legal responsibility in maintaining public water systems.
Maybe that's all that is required then. I don't wanna drag out seven members of council again for two or three, or stint if it's not required. But I think we, from a legal standpoint, that, uh, we are aware, it is our responsibility to, uh, be involved or at least know what's going on. And we do get, uh, good reports from, uh, Public Works and Aqua, so I, I'm not overly concerned. That's just the fact that it came up, that's why I asked the question. Uh, go ahead, counselor Owen.
My understanding was when we took that course, that that was the mandated course and that we had to pass that course uh, as a requirement to sit on council. I'm not willing to take any more courses because of what I was told during my training that that was the course we needed. And, uh, I didn't sign up for taking all sorts of courses that have to do with something that is technically way over my head.
Yeah, fair enough, uh, and, uh, actually, I don't recall the one at Heritage North because I'd already taken it, so maybe I, I wasn't there for it. Uh, so thanks for, uh, updating me on that. I wasn't aware, or it's a couple of years ago now. Yeah, okay. Any, uh, further comments on the, uh?
Um, yes, I have a, uh, I have a comment about this. Uh, this is a well put together, uh, report by Ontario Clean Water Agency. Uh, my, my question is on page fifteen, table three, one of this, which sets out the rates from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty seven. Four percent, four percent, four percent, four percent, and two percent in two thousand four, and I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking, uh, that in light of the COVID pandemic that we're in and recognizing that when we do get our this COVID, people will be in a terrible financial bind, including businesses. So is, is there a way to, uh, maybe take a look at this table, uh, going forward, and this is not gonna be affecting the submission, to see if we can at least try to, uh, move some of those increases, uh, forward so as to at least uh, help our residents in terms of, uh, financial hardship, because I take it that the table was prepared, everything was put together, the projection was put together uh, prior to the onset of, uh, pandemic, but this is just a consideration for the the director to, to see if, uh, if we can, is a way to, uh, lessen that four percent and maybe move it ahead a little bit. Uh, I, I, I know that will affect our reserve money going to the reserve and whatnot, but again, like, I don't think any businesses, or most of them anyways, and that translates into rate pairs will be in a very solid financial, uh, situation coming out of COVID nineteen. So just starting the questions, just something that, uh, that we want to consider going forward.
If I may comment, councillor Shaba, uh, we did pass a motion that to accept the, uh, rates from two thousand and twenty, uh, just recently. So at this point, there hasn't been any increase. Actually, uh, the way it was explained to be by Mike, by, uh, Keith, uh, I, I think we're going to get by with possibly without an increase. I don't want to commit to that, but, uh, that's, that is the goal at this point. So Keith or, uh, Michelle, uh, you care to comment?
Yeah, basically, this report is that there was assumptions made, uh, for this report. Doesn't mean that, uh, it's gonna be a reality.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Keith, do you want to respond before councillor Owen?
Uh, thank you, your worship. So what we'll do with this report is we'll take it into consideration. We'll look at the reserve levels they're establishing and look at costs and revenues as we're bringing them in. Uh, we've got to sort of see where we land on our twenty twenty numbers to understand what our starting point is for twenty twenty one. So we'll look at it as a group and, and try to align with those reserve targets, if you will. And go forward like that.
Yeah, before we go to councillor Owen, I just, I have to agree with you on this because in the past, uh, setting aside reserves has been an uphill battle. Uh, and at times just weren't done. And with water and sewer, we are required, uh, to meet the, the costs and pass them on to the taxpayer. So, uh, having that reserve in place and building it up is, is very important. And I hate to, you know, we've been pushing for the past two years, this council, and I know someone on the lot past council as well, but, uh, reserves always seem to get kind of set aside. I know we're working on a reserve policy uh, for this year's budget, so, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that two thousand twenty one, uh, with, without the increases, we're going to be okay because of, uh, a carryover from two thousand twenty, but that remains to be seen. Uh, councillor Owen?
Yeah, the other thing with water and wastewater is that we cannot use tax money to subsidize water or wastewater. It has to be financially self-sustaining. And that creates its own problems. And as was pointed out early, these, earlier, these are projections. They're not written in stone. They're based on, uh, best information available. They could be more, they could be less. But we did inherit a system with very little reserves, and so we have to be conscious of building up, uh, water and wastewater reserves, especially considering that we have, uh, infrastructure that's carrying our water that's eighty five years old. And that we have a harsh, uh, northern climate, which, uh, those two factors alone, uh, are pretty much going to predict that down the road we could face a catastrophic winter. Um, so I, 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 I think we, uh, we need the report for the license. We need the license to provide the water and we'll deal with the details as the years come up in terms of the four percent. Hopefully, we can do it as we've done everything on this council at the least cost possible, but providing the top service for our residents and our businesses. And, uh, I, I thank, uh, everybody for the report and, uh, Michelle for his presentation. Thank you.
Any further comments or concerns? We have a motion to accept the report.
Motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Chaba, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash PW dash zero zero one entitled Kirkland Lake Municipal Drinking Water License Renewal Application be received. That council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake hereby accepts the corporation of the town Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System Financial Plan as presented. That staff be directed to submit the updated Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System Financial Plan number two one four dash three zero one, revision four twenty twenty one to twenty twenty six in accordance with Oreg four five three slash zero seven to the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks for the Kirkland Lake Municipal Drinking Water License Renewal. And that staff be directed to upload a copy of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System Financial Plan on the town's website.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point four, small business, uh, or small communication commit, sorry, small communities fund extension, Mr. Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you. Through you, your worship, the item in question regards an extension to an existing funding agreement. That agreement underlies the Swastika wastewater project. To recap, that project would be carrying the wastewater from Swastika to Kirkland Lake for processing. The amendment, uh, would extend the project deadline to October thirty first, twenty twenty two. The extension would accommodate the delays caused last year and probably this year with COVID, as well as, um, uh, enable the town to meet the project schedule as was proposed by Mr. Ribardi in his report provided to council in November of twenty twenty.
Very accepting questions or concerns from council? None noted? We'll go to a motion to accept that.
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty one dash dev dash zero zero four entitled Small Communities Fund Extension be received. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to council that authorizes the mayor and clerk to sign the second amending agreement to B C F S C F file number S C F dash five ninety being in an agreement to change the project completion date for the decommissioning of the Swastika wastewater treatment plant to October thirty first, twenty twenty two.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point five, uh, committee member appointment policy and reappointing counselors, uh, to committees, treasurer, secretary, uh, clerk, Megan Elliott. Sorry.
Thank you, your worship. That's okay, through, through you to council. Presented today is a committee member appointment policy as, um, filling council's direction from the December fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting, um, as well as a list of counselor appointments to the committees that Mayor Kylie, uh, spoke with you about prior. Um, so based on the appointment of the counselors, there are not too many changes proposed. It's mostly replacing councillor Shaba in place of councillor Perry in most cases. And I'm available for any questions.
Um, yeah, I take it that someone will be contacting me when to go to all these committee meetings at some point?
Yes, that's, uh,
Okay.
Once this is approved here tonight, uh, then the, uh, uh, committee chairs will, uh, will be contacting you as to when the next meeting is.
Yeah, I have all, we have all the dates, color, color coded dates.
Yeah, councillor Owen?
I was just gonna say, if you go see Megan, you can get this very pretty, uh, calendar with all the, uh, committee meetings on it. And, uh, it's quite handy, unless you're colorblind like me, which makes some of the shades a little hard to tell, but that's okay. But there is a calendar, uh, and generally speaking, the calendar is, is, uh, adhered to. Once in a while, there, there, we had a committee of adjustment, uh, meeting that was canceled because of COVID, a couple of our members, uh, one had internet problems, the other couldn't zoom, and, and so we wouldn't have had a quorum. But other initiatives like that, that calendar is very good. Thank you, Megan.
Any concerns or further questions? None noted? We have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Chaba, be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty one dash C L K dash zero zero five M entitled Committee Member Appointment Policy and Reappointing Counselors to Committees Be Received. That the Committee Member Appointment Policy is hereby approved. That staff be directed to insert the policy into the corporate policy manual and that the amended counselor appointments listed in attachment two are hereby approved.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point six, all terrain vehicle bylaw. Ms. Elliott?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. This memo was difficult for me to write to try to explain what has been recently uncovered, so I'll try to explain a little more here. In July of twenty twenty, we received correspondence from the M T O that allowed more vehicles on our roads if council wished. Um, so at that point, or at that time, it was at the police services board first and then went to council uh, and supported the police services board recommendation to not add those additional vehicles, which is things like, uh, the dirt bikes and those big six wheel things. So with that, I even replaying the tape of the meeting at the time, the bylaw was often referred to as the off-road vehicle bylaw, which just based on definitions counts as other vehicles than an all-terrain vehicle is considered. So when further looking into the bylaw after a resident complaint with, um, certain staff members, OPP residents being confused, we found that the current bylaw actually doesn't allow anything other than all-terrain vehicles, which a part of that definition says that altering vehicles is steered by handles, so then that doesn't count for side by sides. So with speaking with, um, Ryan Dugan at the OPP, he remembered in two thousand fifteen that there was the same kind of correspondence that we got in twenty twenty, but at that time, it was defining what a side by side, what is, which is a U T V, I think it's utility terrain vehicle. And the wording of the motion passing the bylaw in twenty fifteen suggests that that council did want language included. But the actual bylaw that's been printed, signed, and in effect, doesn't include that. So I think based on conversations, I, I just wanted to bring it in front of you to see is that what we all thought as well? Do we want a bylaw that includes not the new ones from twenty twenty, but just anything up into that new one? And if so, then to have you direct, direct, have staff be directed to amend the bylaw.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, if my memory serves me right, when the bylaw was first passed, side by sides were not allowed on the road. Um, and I think that's why the bylaw was written the way it was. Later on, because I remember council discussing the handlebar thing and how side by sides didn't qualify. Later on, I believe the province changed it, just as they did with the recent change. So I, I'm certainly in favor of changing that part of the bylaw, but I, I, I will defer to, uh, councillor Owens if, uh, I, I have concerns about the government road issue, and I believe councillor Owens, uh, has done some research on that, so I'll, I'll defer to him. Thank you.
Councillor Owens?
Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two parts to what we have to discuss in that grade. There's the whole language and then government road itself?
Yes, so there are many aspects within that. I think on our conversations today, we can say which way you want to go for that bylaw to be presented. There would still be a, a new bylaw with new language for you to consider.
Okay.
Um, so the main part of this is the language of including other off-road vehicles, not just all-terrain. But then if you are also wanting to have directed, uh, to review the the language that allows people on certain portion of government road, we can look at that as well.
Well, the way I read the report you presented, that was part of the report because right now it's defined as being from Burnside to Main Street, which the way it was presented to me back in two thousand fifteen, and I actually reached out to two former counselors today to, to, to try and get some rational as to why it would stop the Main Street and not the whole length of government road, and it didn't make sense, and never mind neither, because a, and in the legislation that I, I looked up online, it clearly says that O V R, so any off-road vehicles cannot travel on four hundred series, the Queen Elizabeth Way, and any section of the Trans Canada Highway. Well, a, and I think this might be a gray zone because it's a connecting link in the Trans Canada Highway. So to me, any off-road vehicle should not be permitted from one end of government road within the municipality of Kirkland Lake to where that connecting link ends at government and at Highway sixty six where it resumes at, uh, at Goldthorpe. That, that's how I see it. So I, I think there's, we've got two dilemmas to. So I, I think there's, we've got two dilemmas to, what we need to have discussion about what we plan on doing with that part.
Through you, your worship, to councillor Owens. On that piece, I would have to discuss with the Director of Public Works on his knowledge as well and do a little bit more research to see if that is language that we can have included moving forward, or if that is putting us going, like being liable. I, I do also just want to note that this particular resident who has been having the issues, that is the main area that they do use their side-by-side for. So just to keep that in mind.
I, I get that, but a, at one point, rules are rules, right? And rules have to, a, and, and I'm not necessarily dismissing their situation, but as a municipality, we need to make sure that all rules apply to everybody and that it's fair to everybody and that it's safe for everybody. We've got rules that permit snowmobiles to travel on our streets, but yet they're damaging private properties or damaging public properties, parks and stuff, because some people choose not to respect the rules that are put in place and use these vehicles where they're not supposed to. So government road, the four lanes, it is a busy section of the road. And they're off-road vehicles. They're not meant to be driven on four-lane highways or on busy arteries, so I, I think the legend, personally, I think the, the language needs to be clarified. If we need to reach out to the Police Services Board, to Fiscal Services, I think we, we should definitely be doing that.
I would agree with that councillor Owens. Perhaps, Megan, we can rewrite it after doing some research and presented that the Police Services Board in advance of that meeting so that Ryan can have a look at it. Because he did provide good input on the original, so I think that's a good avenue to go. We, we'd like to get this cleaned up permanently, and we can't be overruling what the provincial legislation is for, for that particular type of highway, so let's, let's get it done. That's my opinion. Counselor Adams, did you have your hand up earlier? Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, good job on the individuals that did their digging to find that. That's very highly impressed by the individuals that think that kind of work in municipal politics. Not many can do that.
Agree.
If it's just changing the U T V, like, I understand the concern. I would be in favor of the change to U T V to allow them, but we'll have to see what the rules are that exist and have that in writing to be available.
Any further comments? Megan, can you adjust? Motion?
Yes, your worship, through you to council. I have the mover as councillor Owens. So councillor Owens, would you like to include that amendment that it goes through Police Service Board first?
Yes, please.
Just give me one moment. A main amendment moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that memorandum number two thousand and twenty-one dash C L K dash zero zero four M entitled All-terrain Vehicle Bylaw be received? And that staff be directed to investigate the use of a portion of government road with off-road vehicles to the Police Service Board for recommendation to council? And that staff be directed to present the Police Service Board recommendations to council with language updated and a draft bylaw for consideration.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven, consideration of notices of motion. None noted? Introduction and reading of and consideration of bylaws.
I think we have four here. Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacey White, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor, the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero zero eight being a bylaw to repeal bylaws that appoint and delegate authority to a chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero zero nine being a bylaw to appoint a municipal law enforcement officer for the purpose of enforcing bylaws in the town of Kirkland Lake. And through your worship, I just wanted to make note, this is just a small housekeeping. The previous bylaw still had named Ms. Gagnon, so just making it the current officer only.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero ten being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Tracy Barb for animal control services.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero one one being a bylaw to amend bylaw sixteen dash zero seven nine, a bylaw that authorized the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement between the Ontario Ministry of Agricultural Food and Rural Affairs, New Building Canada Fund, Small Communities Fund, and the Town of Kirkland Lake Project S C F dash five ninety decommissioning the Swastika wastewater treatment plant.
All in favor? Motion carried. Questions from councillor, councils to staff? None noted? Notices of motion. Councillor White.
Yes, so at next council meeting, I will be bringing forth a motion to direct staff to investigate a partnership with the municipality bus patrol and the District School Board Ontario Northeast for a camera monitoring system for the school buses and report back to council by April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Any comments or concerns? Councillor Owen.
Is this the, excuse me, through the merit to Stacey, is this the camera system that that's on the outside of the bus that, that photographs vehicles that are passing? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, it is. So I spoke with councillor Owen about this, Owens, Owens about this already. His school board actually has done this quite a few years ago, and they've actually had some convictions because of it. So it may actually support revenues via fines if, if staff bring forth that it's actually worth investing in. And actually, it's no cost to the municipality through this system, because it's a cost-sharing program.
Okay. That welcome to the
Yeah, it'll come back.
Meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Councillor, councillor reports?
Um, I, I don't have much of a report, but it obviously fits in into this. People are extremely very happy that we opened up the, the rink for usage. And, you know, good feedback from the community, so I'd just like to express my appreciation to the director in charge of that, because as you know, this COVID nineteen is is getting to everyone, so it's nice to have a place for the young people to to do something else.
Thank you, councillor Shaba. Councillor White.
Uh, yeah, so on January nineteen, nineteenth, I took part in the Northern Policy Institute's circular, Northern Ontario Circular Economy Symposium event. It had about two hundred and fifty registered attendance with more viewing on YouTube. It included speakers such as Mark G. Sarey, MP for Nickelbell, Charles Chitwell, President and CEO of the Northern Policy Institute, David Oswald, who is a designer and an environmental specialist, Angela Recollect, Executive Director of Shaggy McQuay Health Institute, as well as two gradate students, Sophia Merher and Jane Walker, who are making a difference in their communities by establishing the first Fridays for the future chapters in Northern Ontario, as well as many other speakers from actually around the globe. I was able to ask what role municipal government can play in supporting the efforts of the circular economy, especially within the mining and forestry sectors. I was given quite a bit of good feedback, starting with drafting policies in support of the businesses that would be involved in the circular economy. Sudbury is becoming well-known around the world currently for their positive decisions in this area. And part of it is, I believe, our current C I P program is one of the positive steps that can be used by local innovators to include themselves in the circular economy by possibly recovering value from local wastelands and the forestry byproducts as examples. So overall, it was quite interesting, and I was really happy to take part in that, so thank you.
Good, thank you. Councillor Owen.
Yeah, I just, I've been watching the COVID numbers in the district and compared to other places in the province, our district is doing exceedingly well, and I just want to thank the residents for following the health recommendations and, and keeping the numbers down. I'm a little concerned that we face the same restrictive regulations that places like Toronto have when we only have one case, I didn't check today, but yesterday only had one case in our whole district. I think that's a little unfair to the businesses in our town. But having said that, I, I think it's important that, that we continue to follow the rules as set out by the province and the health unit. The other thing is that, while I'm not out as much, I, I'm at this, I'm on this stay-at-home work order or provincial order, and I wish I had a job right now, because as a reporter, I would have been out and about and all over town, but the few times that I've been out recently, I have noticed that our, and I, I've noticed that our streets are, in terms of snow plowing and snow removal, are in excellent condition compared to other years. I know we haven't had as much snow, but I have noticed some changes in the way that we're doing it that are really making a difference. For instance, on my street, when they first did it, at the first year, they plowed the street wider than it was, which gave them a place to plow the snow when it came later. They came by, this, I think it was this past week, and did snow removal. And once again, they widened it out to the width that it was at the start of the summer, or sorry, summer, yeah, I wish, start of the winter. So now they have a place to deposit the snow. I was driving on government road today and it's bare to the pavement. That's something something that we aim for, but very seldom achieved in the past, so I just want to pass my appreciation and, and appreciation of, I'm sure, many, many residents of Kirkland Lake for the the vast improvement in the snow plowing and snow removal this year. Thank you.
Would definitely agree with you, councillor Owen. At the last council meeting, councillor Owen mentioned about any conference that councillors are attending to give an update as to an overview of the how the conference went. So I believe councillor White and myself were there, and I'm not sure if there was another councillor, we didn't see each other, but I think Keith might have tuned in for some of it as well. So between councillor White and myself, we will comment on that at the next meeting, if that's okay with you, councillor White. It, it was quite different. But it was good. We'll leave it at that, and we'll give you a bit of an update at the next council meeting.
So moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number twelve, additional information. Clerk. Megan Elliott.
Have some correspondence that is looking for support to extend the deadline for the asset management planning. So we have a letter here today to pass through you if you wish to show your support and submit that sign of support.
Councillor White.
Yeah, I would definitely motion this to be brought forth for our councils to bring forth the letter in support of this for sure. If I can get a second, or I'm sure our staff would really appreciate it.
I'll second.
Five, a motion moved by Stacey White, seconded by Patrick Adams, be it resolved that the letter from M F O A dated October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, seeking support for requesting an extension to the asset management planning be received? And that council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports a request for a one-year extension of deadlines in O Reg five eight eight slash seventeen.
All in favor? Motion carried. Twelve point two, stats count.
Correspondence received to raise awareness that there will be a census in May of two thousand and twenty-one that Mayor Kylie requested on the agenda to publicly share this notice. So I have a motion moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that the correspondence from Statistics Canada regarding the two thousand and twenty-one census be received?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item twelve point three.
Based on our integrity, sorry?
Sorry.
Sorry, Pat, are we gonna, sorry, are we gonna do anything to support the census? Will we be putting it up on our website or anything?
Megan, I think it, oh, we, we should have that on our website. I do agree.
I think in the letter, they're gonna reach out to us to put that, or, no, sorry.
I believe it was a formal request for us to sorry, I don't know, I don't have the wording.
At the Council of Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports a two thousand and one census and encourages all residents to complete your census questionnaire online, so I'll move it. You know what? I'm a history major. I, I worked in the nineteen oh one censor census for my, part of my thesis. It's an amazing document for historians to work in, so I'll, I'll totally support this one.
Perfect. I second too, yeah.
The only thing that I, I don't want to use the word caution, but the only reason of why I had it only listed for received, we, we can also include that. I, I just didn't get a chance to look back at our newly passed motion, or sorry, policy that includes about proclamations and making announcements. So I don't know if that falls into that, where we're not really gonna, you know, kind of jump in on everything. We can, we can do this to show support, but I'm not sure if that goes against our policy. I would have to look into that.
But considering that this is also But considering that this is also a legal requirement where you're legally obligated by law to fill out your census, I think this one should be considered not one of the ones that we don't support.
Yeah, I agree with Casey. I don't think at the time we passed that we were thinking about higher levels of government asking for our support. We were more thinking of local organizations and yeah, so I definitely, the census is something that is really important because funding is based on the numbers and the data that they get from the census. So it's bigger than just proclaiming a day. So I don't know if we'll have to go back and change the wording on what we just passed.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if our current policy, which I believe is a new policy, prohibits us posting such things to our website, which is a legal obligation, but it's also service to our residents, then, okay, we can't do it. But we need to go back and change that policy. And then once we change that policy, then I strongly would recommend that we post it on our website for our residents to see. Thank you.
Well, Megan, even if this is an exception, I do totally agree. It should be on the website. We want to inform the people of Kirkland Lake what's going on with the census. The numbers are important to us as far as funding formulas. So it's important that they're asking for support. And I think this, it's a reasonable request to at least make make sure that people are aware of this is happening.
Through you, Counselor Owens, with your moving emotion, what would you like your motion to read? Sorry?
That last paragraph, be resolved that the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports a 2021 census and encourages all residents to complete their census questionnaire online at www.sensus.gc.ca.
Perfect. So moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. Would you like me to repeat?
Not for me.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carried. Item 12.3.
As with our Integrity Commissioner Report Protocol, we are required to give notice of an inquiry report being presented the meeting before it is placed on the agenda. So this is just a verbal notice to say that there will be an inquiry report on the February 16th, 2021 regular meeting of council agenda in which the Integrity Commissioner should be presenting it via Zoom. I'm confirming that, but we believe that that will be what will be happening. So I have a motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the verbal notice of Integrity Commissioner Report coming to the February 16th, 2021 regular meeting of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have a motion to move into a closed in-camera session.
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to Section 239-2 to discuss one land disposition matter and one matter involving identifiable individuals.
All in favor? Motion carried. A little of a short break while you switch.
Okay, your worship, we are live streaming and recording again for the second half of open.
Item 14, matters from the closed session. Anything to note? Nothing noted. Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, third time numbered pass, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21-012 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February 2nd, 2021.
All in favor?
Yep.
Motion carried. Adjourned.
Moved by Rick Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that council adjourn the February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of council.
I was anxious, sorry. Motion carried.